Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call. The Monday, June ninth, school committee meeting to order here at the Colbert School. Before we move into our regular agenda, I'm gonna turn it over to you, Mr. Lee, for a moment of silence.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Back in December, we took a moment at the school committee to recognize the retirement of one Tommy Mahar. Tommy had been the head custodian of Braintree High School since it opened in nineteen seventy-two. Very sad to report that past week Tommy passed away at the age of seventy-seven. If anybody, if anyone here knew Tommy, Tommy was a gentle ambassador for Braintree High School for decades. A kind person who would go out of his way to help anybody who needed it. And Tommy will be sorely missed. And for all of that, I would just ask for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Yeah. Moving on to public comment, I have one. Anybody else in the room would like to speak, but Mr. Cass?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I hope you had a nice weekend. Well, so first of all, congratulations on passing the school budget. That's a great accomplishment, especially with level services funding. Although I will note for the public that the school committee and the council voted for this this year, just as they did in twenty twenty-three. And it's an election year, whereas last year we cut the school budget by four million dollars. So just make that point. So when you're making a decision about voting for people, you know, pay attention to the off years, not just the years we have elections. Second, we have an RFP for the school building plan coming up. And I've been advocating for a school building plan since twenty seventeen or so, when I first got involved with a group of parents who had courageously advocated for a full-day kindergarten and, and, and learned from their, their lessons and expertise. This is really important because even though we've just built a new school building, most of our school buildings are in terrible shape. And I think it's really important in the school building plan that we're gonna put together, which I understand is scheduled to take about ninety days or so, that we pay attention to what the cost of maintenance is for the school buildings. We pay a certain amount for school maintenance at the moment, and I understand it's the base rate compared to the rest of the state. And it took me a while to realize that and think through it, but that doesn't necessarily mean that we're actually paying the amount of money that is required to pay for maintenance for schools because of the lack of investment that we've put into over the last thirty or forty years. So what I would like to see from this school building plan is, or even before that, oh, and let me just say for a moment, thank you to the administration for doing the school building assessment, which is the first I've seen in, you know, since twenty seventeen, and that was very helpful. And then also the capital assessment, you know, those are definite pieces of information and transparency that we've, we've needed in Braintree. But I think further transparency, so that the public can make a decision about what we need to do to invest and understand the level of deterioration of the, the school buildings that are out there, is what exactly is the right amount of money that we need to be spending on maintenance for the school buildings every year? Not the standard base rate that we're current spending, but what we should be spending. In addition, I think it would be also important as part of the school building plan to put in a software element. We have a trouble ticket system, and we also have a school maintenance module, but only two schools, the two middle schools are involved and put into that system at the moment. And it's gonna cost something to put it in, but you know, I've, I've been advocating since twenty seventeen, if we, if we put twenty thousand dollars every year, you know, in, in another eight years, we'll probably be finished. So if we start now, we'll get it done. I don't, I don't see it really as a problem. So I, I, and I also would advocate, actually, if we do decide to close a school based upon the school building plan, do a ballot measure. You know, we've had two years of this. First, in April of twenty twenty-four, and then here in twenty twenty, like, you know, the fall of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, where we've had this decision, we've got to the brink, and then we didn't make it. But I feel part of that is because of the transparency, and that's why I'm so glad that we're doing the school building plan. But I went to that meeting, the PTO meeting in, at Highlands in April of last year, and people were in shock. You know, I mean, the one story I can tell you is there was a family that had just moved up from Georgia. They had five kids, and they said, "We are here for the next twenty years, and you're gonna close our school." You know, and this comes from someone who does think that consolidation is certainly possible if it means that we put the school system and the buildings on a plan forward where we are maintaining those schools. If you're not gonna do that, I wouldn't support closing schools. But my suggestion to you is really have an effort to reach out to the citizens at Highlands, all the other schools, Ross, as we heard last year, and put it on a ballot, you know? And maybe they'll vote for whatever solution came up with it, but you need to get people's voice involved in that process. And then the last thing is, I think it should be tied to the buildings. I, I was shocked when I went to the, the firehouse and saw the state of it. I mean, you would not believe. And it also, and even though the firehouse has got nothing to do with schools, going there, you know, seeing no doors on the stalls, holes in the walls, a room that was blocked off that has mold in it, and you could smell it when you opened the door. The, the towel looked as if it was crumbling, the dispatch system not working properly for several weeks. My goodness, it's awful. If that's the state of that, and it's, and you can't normally see it as a public member, how bad is it with the rest of the schools? That's, that's the relevancy to me, which is, I was already, you know, emboldened with the school maintenance issue, right, as a parent, and seeing the state of schools as they have been over the last few years. But then going and seeing the state of the firehouse and not seeing the council saying something at every single meeting and saying, "Why aren't we raising funds? You know, why aren't we doing something?" I just, I just, I fear that that's, it's even worse, you know, with the state of the school business. The last thing I would say, so, you know, please do what you can do to make this as transparent and as good a process with the school building plan as possible. The last thing I would say about school enrollment, and this is really important because this was, came in the discussion, because two points were made at the beginning of the process, the redistricting process last year. One was, we don't have enough money, especially for the next year, which turned out we did, because, hey, we'd had a really good year, and we should celebrate that. We had an amazing year. We got more development in, and we got more money in tax money, which is, is great, you know? We all, the council, the, the administration, and the school committee all did a good job, but the citizens of Braintree did a good job in bringing extra money in, which is good. School enrollment was also advocated as an issue. You know, it's been going down, and it has been going down. In fact, Braintree is one of those unusual towns in the South Shore where enrollment went up until about twenty eighteen. And then we had the, the boilers blow up, two roofs fall off, and people started leaving. I think, I think there's, and then, you know, twenty nineteen, it started going down and into the pandemic as well. But in the last year, year, enrollment, and I was checking this every, virtually every month, Mr. Lee will attest to this. I was sending him emails, although not on as a regular basis until twenty fifty, twenty twenty-five. In, the, the sixteenth of September, I sent an email, and it was one figure. And then the, the first of November, it was down by two or three. It was, you know, virtually the same number. And then I found it in January that it had dropped by a couple of hundred, and that was the time that the numbers were reported to the state. I think this is really important. I wanna go into this next discussion with the school building plan with numbers that are accurate and transparent, and it's been one of the reasons why I've been so impassioned, because I don't understand how I can be hauling Mr. Lee up and asking what the state of the numbers are, and they drop. I, I just, I'm baffled. I still hasn't been explained to me. I don't understand why, and I would like to see that, especially when I hear that there has been a discussion with the director of the MSBA about lower numbers. And I don't wanna go into the next year where we have a situation, and if the numbers are lower, that's fine. I'm, you know, it is what it is. But I, I think there's a discrepancy here, especially with the way the numbers were laid out. So I would like you to address that. Again, thank you so much for all the volunteer work you do. We really appreciate that. Good government is very important, and have a nice evening.
Hey, Mr. Cass. Is there anyone online?
The ones. We do have four people online, but none have their hand raised.
Okay. All right, so we'll move into routine matters. Approval of open session and executive session minutes from May fifth. Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion by Dr. Horak.
Second.
Second by Ms. Tuffy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Moving on to communications and accommodations, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a number of things just to bring up, because it's been a busy month and a half in the Braintree Public School System. These are in your packet, others I'll just pass along anecdotally. On May ninth through eleventh, Braintree High School production of Your Good Man, Charlie Brown, was done. On May twelfth, both the music and art honor society inductions were held. We had our junior prom, which, as many of you know, is held in the lobby of the high school on May seventeenth. We then had the senior prom on June fourth on the Spirit of Boston this year, kept the audience out to sea. Then on May twentieth, we had the Braintree Art Extravaganza at the high school with both the music department and the art department, with concerts outside and art indoors. It was a wonderful evening. On May twenty-second, we had the annual academic awards night at Braintree High School, which was just a celebration of learning for all that attended. On June third, we had scholarship night, where the community, through its donors, handed out to our senior class over two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in terms of scholarships. So we thank all of them for that. In your, I don't know if it's in your packet. We also had at Morrison, an exhibition of wheelchair football that was put on by, well, in collaboration with our own tech director, John Brace. John is a member of the Patriots wheelchair football team. He brought his teammates, and they ran clinics for the kids. I thought it was outstanding. Mr. Reed might attest to that as well, but the kids had a blast, and it's just truly impressive, the talent that was on display. In your packet is a letter regarding the self-music program and the amount of participation and the quality of our musicians itself. On June twelfth this week, there's a Law Day Ceremony invitation for your purview, if you'd like to go. And then, most recently, on Saturday, right before all the rain, we had the graduation of the class of two thousand twenty-five, which was excellent, and certainly not just well-attended, but the student speeches were fantastic, and again, just a great celebration for the community. And then, lastly, I believe this is in your packet, Jill Boyd, who is one of our crossing guards at Flaherty, received some recognition for, I believe it's Traffic Supervisor of the Year. I'm gonna mess that up, and I don't wanna do that. One second, I wanna get this right. Crossing Guard, Champion Crossing Guard of the Year from MassDOT. She was one of four hundred and fifty-seven nominees and five winners across the state. A welcoming face for students, our students, our families, and quite a number of pets, apparently. Hello and good morning every day on the way to school. So congratulations, Jill, and that's what I have.
Very busy spring. I have two additional announcements. This Thursday night, CPAC and the mayor will be co-hosting the Community Inclusion Awards at Town Hall, again this Thursday at six-thirty, and also on display at Town Hall, Art of the Veteran Project through June twenty-sixth. So if you're during regular Town Hall hours, so if you happen to be in Town Hall, please stop by and take a look at that. Again, the Art of Veterans Project. Are there any other questions or comments from the committee on the communications accommodations? Dr. Horak?
This was a lot of exciting things in the past few months. There's so many that I wasn't able to attend them all. But I did attend scholarship night, and this was so delightful, and I'm never gonna miss another one again, because it was just incredibly exciting to see all the success of the students and see so many community partners supporting our students and sending them off to whatever success they're going to do. So, you know, thank you for the school leadership, for providing all these opportunities for all of our students the last few months.
It's a great night. Anthony Grafflow in the guidance department deserves a lot of credit, but most importantly, it's the donors throughout the community that brought the money for those awards.
How many kids actually received?
Over two hundred.
That's great. And thanks for the rain on Saturday that held off for the graduation ceremony. Eleven-thirty, I think it wrapped up, and I think the first raindrop started falling around noon time, so it was great. It was a great ceremony. So congratulations to all of our two thousand twenty-five graduates.
Alumni.
Alumni now, yes, exactly. All right, moving on. Gifts to schools. All right, we have quite a few tonight, so bear with me. Bay State Textiles, eleven checks totaling seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety cents. South Middle School, gifts totaling thirty-two thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars and one cent. One deposit totaling six thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars for the grade-eight tree tops trip. One deposit totaling six thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars for the seventh-grade tree tops trip. One deposit totaling seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars for the sixth-grade tree tops trip. One deposit totaling seven hundred and ninety dollars for the tree tops trip. Hundred and fifty dollars in the garden club, six hundred and forty. One deposit totaling six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-six cents for the theater play, and one deposit totaling four thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-five cents for the scholastic book fair. Flaherty Elementary School, one deposit totaling fifteen hundred dollars from the William James College Student Placement Honorary Room. Liberty Elementary School, gifts totaling seven hundred and eighty dollars, one deposit five hundred and twenty dollars from the Liberty PTO to cover payment for the nurse on two field trips, and one deposit totaling two hundred and sixty dollars from the Liberty PTO to cover payment for a nurse on a school field trip. East Middle School, Gifts to Schools totaling eighteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-seven cents. One deposit, one deposit totaling eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents. Yearbook, two seventy-six, DC Trip, two ninety-two seventy-four, Theater Guild, three thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty-five cents, and the General Fund, four thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents. One deposit totaling ten thousand and five dollars from the Great East Music Festival Trip, a donation of a drum set, PDP Center Stage five-piece complete drum set in ruby red sparkle, along with a drum, stool, and stick, approximate value of five hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And the Braintree High School Gifts to Schools totaling twenty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars and thirty cents. One deposit for three hundred dollars towards the BHS Boys Volleyball Team, one deposit for nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety cents from Snap Mobile to be used for the Braintree High School Baseball Team. One deposit totaling four thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars from the BHS Music Department Mattress fundraiser. One deposit totaling fifty-five dollars from the BHS Nursing Department Helping Hands Program, and one deposit totaling six thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars and forty cents from the Braintree Baseball Club for the BHS Softball Team, five hundred dollars, and from Snap Mobile for the BHS Softball Team, six thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars and forty cents. So I have a motion to receive all these gifts.
So moved.
I have a question.
Yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Tuffy.
So my question is about Snap Mobile. This, this is like an app that aggregates donations. Is that what it is?
I honestly have to look into that. I don't have a direct answer.
We don't really know who the donation is from. It's, it's through this company that aggregates donations. Is that correct?
Given what you just described, I would assume that is correct.
We don't have any way of knowing.
Who the actual donors are?
Right, so I mean, if you ever do a GoFundMe, there's, there's actual donors listed. All right, I, I have, I have some reservations about, about that, because it's transparent.
So are you asking us to get more information on that particular one, except all the other gifts and hold this one off until the next school committee meeting?
I just, do, do you know Ruby?
Oh, Ruby knows.
Twenty twenty-six used Snap Raise last year to collect donations, and every donation had a name affiliated with it.
So the donations have names attached to them?
Yep.
Yeah. All right, so are we able to access that information?
Again, I'd have to look into it, but I'd also point out, many of our fundraisers involve money coming into us from parties that become unknown. If you bought, like, one of the cards that they used to sell on the football teams, or you did the fifty-fifty raffle, like, we don't track everybody who hands us money. So if you want the information that, that Ruby says is available, I can, I can seek to get it for you, but I do not have any information tonight.
Yeah, I just have reservations about such large donations where we don't know who they came from, or we also don't know exactly what they're for. So I, I would just.
It's for the Braintree High School softball.
I would ask for more information on this, the, the donations through, through that app.
Can I ask her clarions?
Just two.
That's right, my, yeah, it was for the softball and the baseball team.
Okay, so the one deposit totaling nine hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety cents from Snap Mobile to be used for the BHS Baseball Team, and the six thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars and forty cents for the BHS Softball Team. So we'll postpone receiving those gifts until the next school committee meeting, if we can try to gather that information.
Yes.
So I have an amended motion by, by Ms. Hor, Dr. Horak, to accept all of these gifts, with the exception of those two.
We move the amended motion.
I have a motion by Dr. Horak.
And I second the amended motion.
A second by Ms. Tuffy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you for that. Moving on to trips approvals.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your packet, you will find requests for three trips that have been done in the past, and we are really ahead of schedule on some of these. There's a Universal Dance Association National Competition in Orlando, Florida, by our varsity dance team, the dates of which would be February fourth, two thousand twenty-six, through February ninth of two thousand twenty-six. There is the middle school trips to Quebec, both east and south, from May fourteenth to the seventeenth of two thousand twenty-six, involving grade-eight French students. And then the South Middle Schools, Washington, DC, request the dates of March eighteenth through the twenty-first in two thousand twenty-six, grade eight. We would anticipate the east one coming through later.
Are there any questions from the committee on any of the trips? These, Dr. Horak?
Okay. My questions relate to the Washington, DC trip, just because there was less about it in our binders. Is this offered to all the students in grade eight?
It's offered to all students. Not all students go, but it is offered to all students.
Okay. And how many students went on this trip in past years?
Mr. Ray, can you give me an estimate? Evening. It was about a hundred and ten, between a hundred and a hundred and ten over the last three, four years.
That's outstanding.
How many eighth graders are there?
Of a hundred and sixty.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Great. Are you gonna be flying, or a train, or a bus?
Bus, charter bus.
So you're leaving on a charter bus from Boston, or from Braintree?
Yes, from Braintree, yep.
Wow, that's a big trip.
But for the eighth-grade mind, the bus trip is a good portion of the entertainment bonding time.
As long as it don't break down.
As long as it don't break down.
And it's got a potty. Great. And does the travel company have comprehensive insurance? And do they also offer insurance to the students in case they need to cancel for sickness or some other reason?
Yes, my understanding is they actually offer two different insurance plans. One that is, costs more, but offers more of a refund and for a later date, and one that is more of an affordable option for families who want some coverage, and then, of course, you end up no coverage.
Okay. That's all my questions about any of the three trips.
Are there any other questions from the committee? No. Do I have a motion to approve all three trips?
So moved to approve all three trips.
I have a motion by Dr. Horak.
Second.
Like my Ms. Tuffy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. For that, moving on to, from superintendent's staff, our introduction of our new principals.
So very excited this evening to, well, to introduce one individual to you, but we'll get to the second one in a moment. Melanie Hart, please have a seat. Melanie comes to us. She was in Bridgewater, Rainham, prior to coming here, and Brockton before that. But through the search process that we went through at the elementary level, she is a successful candidate for Liberty Elementary School. We're very excited to have Melanie on board and to, you know, prepare to see what kind of work she can do with the students and staff at Liberty. But she's here this evening just to meet and greet all of you, and so I don't know if people have questions, but Madam Chair.
Welcome to Braintree.
Thank you.
Highly recommended by the search committee.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Very excited.
Any questions from the committee? Nothing? Want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. Well, first, I just wanna take this time to say how excited I am to join Braintree Public Schools, and the administration has already been so welcoming. I've had the opportunity to meet the staff and the students at the Liberty, and I look forward to joining the family night that's coming up in a couple, in a week or so, to meet a lot of the families as well. So I'm excited about that. Just a little bit about myself, I was, most recently, the Director of Services in Bridgewater, Rainham. So I oversaw all related service providers, as well as the Special Education Department and the Nursing Department. And then, prior to that, I was a principal at one of the elementary schools in Brockton for five years. And then I was an assistant principal prior to that at our therapeutic day school in Brockton, which served students grades two through twelve. So I have, you know, a variety of experience, and I just, I, I'm excited to be working with students again. I'm, I'm really excited to be back in the school building, so I'm looking forward to this new opportunity.
No, I just wanted to say I had the pleasure of meeting Melanie a little while, maybe about a week or two ago. I'm sort of very happy to have you here in Braintree and wish you the best of luck.
Thank you so much. Anything for anyone else?
I'd love to hear, what's your favorite part of being the building principal?
Walking through the classrooms. I, well, two things. Walking through the classrooms and seeing, you know, seeing students learning and engaged in, in their education, but also arrival. I love arrival. Just having that opportunity, an informal opportunity, to see where, get a pulse of where the kids are each and every day, getting to greet them and, and kind of have fun with them before the day starts, and also getting to know the families. I always took that opportunity in, in Brockton at Arrival Time to really talk with the families and just get to know them on a different level. So it just helped build my relationships with, you know, with the families and the students. So I would say those are my two favorite parts.
That's outstanding to hear. Thanks for coming.
All right.
Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you very much. Thanks very much. Thanks for being here tonight.
And the next principal to introduce needs no introduction. Dr. Nancy Pelletier. Many of you know Nancy from the many, many years she spent as principal of Highlands Elementary. So when we were looking for somebody to replace Tim McDonald, Nancy was kind enough to accept. So I, no, no, if you have more questions for Nancy, she's a very well-known entity to us. We are very excited about the work she'll do at Hollis in a transitional moment for that school and its staff and its students. But Nancy certainly has the experiences and the talent to make sure the year goes smoothly.
Welcome back.
Oh, thank you.
Nice to see you.
And I'm excited. I enjoyed my time when I was here for fifteen years and forward to the, the next year.
You're very familiar with the Braintree Public Schools, familiar with Hollis and the administration, yes?
Yes, had dinner tonight. This was lovely. This was one out, and I've had an opportunity to go to Hollis already for two half-days and had a wonderful welcome from the staff and students and met a few parents at, at Arrival and dismissal as well.
Excellent. Any questions or comments from?
Thank you for returning. And that's not always an easy thing to do, to come back after you're retired. But we are grateful that you are lending your exit. But uh we are grateful that you are um lending your expertise to Braintree for another year.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Great, thank you very much. Okay, um. Consideration of first reading and approval of the middle school program studies.
Rainey, I asked you to come back up. Mr. Rainey is here to uh address the the changes, albeit few, in the middle school program of studies. This uh is the program of studies for both east and south, but Mr. Rainey, maybe you want to just give us the highlights.
Sure, honestly, there weren't major changes this year, so it was mostly um housekeeping with the dates and, of course, one significant name on the title page. Any questions?
Any questions from the committee on the changes, the proposed changes?
Yeah, I have a few.
With Tuffy.
Um some clarification and uh comments I want to make. So so the middle school uh program, you have seven content blocks a day plus a uh lunch recess period, which amounts to forty-two content blocks per sixteen cycles, is that correct? So in grade five, uh currently you have a full day with seven content blocks, forty-two content blocks per cycle with no studies. And the services provided to special needs students are provided uh using a push-in model. And how is that working out?
Um it's working, yep. I uh there are some students who do receive pull-out services for with specific specialists. Um but for the most part, we're able to do that in the push-in model. Um and always working during professional development time to build those relationships with the co-teaching model as sort of our objective.
Okay, so grade six uh has thirty-nine content blocks per cycle with studies per cycle, is that correct?
Yes, for most students, yeah.
And grade seven uh has a half year of help. And for that half year, there are thirty-nine content blocks and three studies. The other half years, there's thirty-six content blocks um and six studies. So if the kids don't have help, they have a study every day, is that correct?
Yeah, for most students, correct.
And uh for grade eight, um there are six content blocks a day, thirty-six content blocks per cycle. So that means there's six studies per cycle, they have a study every day.
For many students, correct, yeah.
So in twenty-three, twenty-four, um uh we proposed adding uh three blocks per cycle of writing to the grade six and grade seven to address learning loss from the pandemic. And adding three blocks per cycle of engineering to grade eight to address a need identified by the grade eight science and engineering MCAS. Uh what actually happened was uh digital literacy was replaced with a literacy class in grade six. Grade eight writing was extended with the plan to add the engineering class once the uh students who are affected by the pandemic had um completed middle school and caught up to where they would have been um what it's been expected to be. Um when last year um grade eight writing program was eliminated and the plan to add engineering, the engineering course was dropped. So the result was that eighth grade students have to study every day. So I would hope that we are going to examine the eighth grade ELA and science MCAS pretty carefully to determine the the effect of um cutting those, the writing and not adding engineering. Um and I will say that uh while the override prevented catastrophic cuts to the schools and the schools have seen a steady erosion and over the past five years. Parents have been asked to shoulder the burden of paying for services that should be part of a free and fair public education. Uh and it's my hope that Braintree will actively pursue new revenue sources so that schools can begin building back to a full and challenging curriculum for all students.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from Mr. Rainey, specific to the program of studies, the changes? Dr. Horak.
I I I agree with Ms. Tuffy. Um I had also brought the the numbers and I had, I expressed this concern last year. Um and I'll sum it up that I don't think it's fair that there's unequal instructional opportunity for all the students in the school, such that the seventh and eighth graders have to sit in a study hall without having an instruction almost daily. Um I realize it's beyond your control and it's subject to budgetary limitations, but I I do want to go on the record that I don't agree with that. And we need to continue to find ways to increase the instructional opportunities for our middle schoolers. Um I wanted to ask a different question, academic grouping. It says that there's honors and standard for four core subjects in seventh, eighth grade. Can you clarify, what's the approximate split of students between honors and standards? And I know that this is gonna vary by content area, but are we talking small amount honors, large amount standard? Or other way around, or somewhere in between?
Sure, so it usually ends up being about a two to three ratio. Um our sort of envisioning of the program was more of a um like eighty percent, twenty percent split. But um as students sort of are moving through, this is something we're always talking about with directors too and trying to, you know, different for different subject areas and different grades and all that, but it generally tends to shake out at about forty percent, sixty percent, um I would say.
So you're saying forty percent honors, sixty percent standard? Sounds good, and I I really like that it's shown in the program of studies that it's a holistic view of the student of how they get into, uh how they might be selected for an honor and such.
Yes, yeah, that always allows for, you know, and maybe a disparity between an MCAS score and a in-class grade. And there's always room for teacher recommendation and students to show perspicacity in one subject area or another.
Mm-hmm. Um and I was just reading the um about the social studies curriculum. I've been, I've been thinking a lot about social studies curriculum. My daughter's been learning about American history and we're taking a trip to Washington DC this summer to talk, to go see the Constitution Declaration. And I really like how you set out the social studies and I I, you know, for instance, in seventh grade, you focus on the world geography. And um and that's what coincides with the introduction of a world language. And then I like how in the eighth grade, you transition to American government and civic life and asking really important questions about the balance of government and rights of citizens and Braintree government. And this is a key sentence that I love, and I'm actually, I'm gonna talk to you about this because I want to hear, because I get really excited about it. Students will develop a nonpartisan civics action project. Can you give me one example of one of those that you've seen that was an outstanding civics action project?
Yeah, so I would say the best example from at South Middle School is the veterans' projects that the eighth graders can elect to do um research into. It starts with an interview of a local veteran or sometimes a hero from their family um who talks about their experience in armed services and also can provide some of the context, contextual information about what was going on in history at that time and um different reflections in their families and all that sort of stuff that goes beyond what you would read in the textbook, beyond the dates and the important people to um the lives and the um stories that were motivating people to make those sacrifices for the country. And then the students go and do research on some of the more historical and less emotional aspects of it and pull it all together into um a display board that they put in the uh South Middle School Media Center. We had it last Friday, the Veterans Projects Display, um but we also put on Memorial Day Assembly when we invite um local veterans and their family members to come to the school. And every year, the teachers select one war that they focus on. Um and the students go through and present some of that historical context, but also a lot of the individual stories that um make history come alive. And the entire school comes to that as well, so they can not only hear a little bit more about the story behind the story, behind the history, but also um see, and they, because you, there are so many lives that are investigated, that's where I believe the nonpartisan aspect comes in. There's so many different motivators that um, you know, key to guide people into uh their life choices. Um and then the veterans are there as, you know, uh folks who are going through their own memory and process and um really showing the face behind some of these experiences.
I love it because it's uh they're becoming uh more aware of the community around them and um seeing the living history and seeing how um, you know, and and hopefully being excited to learn more. So, great, thank you. If that was all my questions.
Enjoying trip?
Mr. Fogarty?
I have a couple of questions. One is just about the change, the recent change in the um pullout to put in, push-in model in the sixth grade. So that's a new, is that new to this year, basically?
Um it was, that began the model when fifth grade moved into the middle schools. Mostly just because of the fullness of the fifth grade schedule that it made um when self-opened, so that both middle schools were gonna be on the same program of studies at that point. The decision was made to go to the push-in services um so that students weren't having to give up an academic experience to receive needed supports.
I see, so is that ba- basically instead of going out of the classrooms, like a resource room, they're like staying in the classroom, like an inclusion teacher?
Correct, right.
Is that, is that also done in the other grades or mostly in this fifth grade or?
It it's the primary model in fifth grade and then, but it, there's also those times when a small group would get pulled aside. Um and then on the other grades, it's sort of the opposite ratio, right, where students are pulled out on a scheduled basis um to receive support with the more um elevated academic work in the higher grades. But then also there's push-in support from our paraprofessionals as well as the special educators when they're available.
I see.
Yeah.
Yeah, I also have a question about the study halls that uh exist in the middle school. So is there any, I guess, structure to the study halls? Like, for example, in the study halls, can the students get help with their work or uh? Or, you know, or is there some help with organizational skills or extra help with whatever they're working on? And is there like sort of a, another aspect to that question is like, is there a uh are the study hall proctors or or sort of monitoring how how productive the students are are being?
Yes, yes, so basically, yes to all of those questions. Um the study halls are overseen by teachers. Um and so whenever possible, we have a student scheduled with a teacher that is either their same team, ideally, their same grade level. Um if necessary, or sometimes there's a past relationship, you know, from a, like a teacher for a younger grade would have somebody, again. Um and so, but regardless, they can always offer the support of the specific academics or also just looking through an assignment if it's, say, a math teacher is overseeing it, but they've got a question about a English assignment. Um just helping the student work through, read the assignment, what's the teacher looking for, wh- where are you in the process? Um and then there are some students who have completed their homework. Let's say you have study hall first block, so you completed all your homework. It's a good day to focus on organizational skills, um start working on some of the longer-term projects. Uh it's a time when people can do some group work, um although at middle school, I will say that's sometimes a privilege that has to be handled with that. You know, you have to earn it or earn it back. Um.
So so the study halls, um uh uh the teachers that are in the study halls, like I, are they uh? Do they, they, I guess, like, what what are they obligated to do? Are they allowed to do you know, their own correcting or grading, or do they have to be like focused on the students? Is there like sort of a best practice or or requirement, like what what are the teachers that are there supposed to be doing?
Yeah, so their primary goal is oversight, um making sure that students are working and using time wisely. And so especially at the beginning of the years, teachers will invest a little bit more energy and focus into that and making sure that they set the tone and expectation. Um one of the initiatives this year at South was that we realized that um if you put the student rosters for the, for the study halls into the computer, you can also use the program that they use in their academic classrooms called ClassWise that allows you to oversee what's going on on a student's um device, on their Chromebook device. And so the teachers, the teachers actually, a few of them had figured this out and spread the word so that uh we ended up uploading all the rosters because the teachers sort of, they take that responsibility of oversight very seriously, right? So they want to make sure that a student isn't streaming Netflix during study hall, but is actually working on typing in an English essay or um one of the cases may be.
Yeah, and I guess my my last question is the final point, uh uh is just that i- is there a requirement that the students have to be productive? I think you kind of, it sounds like there is.
Right.
Are they like, are the students graded or is there any kind of accountability from like what they've done in the study hall? I assume not, or like pass, fail, or so, but and then, but sorry.
Yeah, so no, it's not a graded class, um although, so I would say the accountability comes in the form of usually it's misconduct, right? That that rises to the fore and so then there's, you know, administrative conversations or often the teachers can redirect behavior to just hold, hold kids to account.
Yeah, I guess my last point is just, it seems if if the uh we don't have the opportunity to have instructional time during those time periods because of the budgetary issues, it seems like a good idea to uh um try to get the students using time productively and to have, it it sounds like they're you're, they're doing that.
Yes.
But I just thought, wanted to raise that point. I know other people have brought that to my attention within the community.
Right, it's not, not free time. Um yeah, we always say to the students, make sure you have a a free reading book, outside reading book with you so that if you finish work, you read the book, right? And so um that's just one of those things, I mean, we all heard it as we were growing up as kids through school too. And so I think it's that message of use your time wisely and always try to be expanding your brain during the, during that.
Thanks.
That's it, thank you.
Yes, any other questions or comments?
I have one more question.
What's that?
So with the cuts last year, um we had to do some consolidation, make some class sizes larger. Uh have you had to um transfer teachers to a position that might not have been their primary certification? Maybe it was a minor in college rather than their major. So so say they were hired to teach one subject, are they now teaching another?
There are some teachers who, so most of the middle school teachers would have a five-block teaching assignment out of the the seven day, the seven block in the day. Um and so with, under DESE, twenty percent of a teacher's schedule is deemed acceptable to be teaching off of their certification. It's obviously not um our ideal situation, but so with most of the teacher assignments, it's fallen under the, that ratio.
So so um some teachers are teaching one of the five blocks that's not in their, that they're not certified for?
Uh I, yes, I would say that's a small number. Most have either dual certifications, but frankly, not as much experience either in the field or more often it's in their field of certification, well under their license and just a new grade. Um or it's something they have a certification for, but it's a different subject area than they've taught in the past.
There's a lot of extra tests, so much to do to uh to prep for a completely different subject.
Right.
And so, I mean, that's an area of concern for me and I hope, again, that as we work towards building back our programming, that can be addressed in a more uh equitable way.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Um I know this is the first reading. Is it time critical? I know we have a meeting in July, but is it, need to get online, need to get ready for beginning of school?
Certainly needs to be online and ready for school. I mean, we have a meeting in July. There'd certainly be a drop dead date with the unknown of August, but.
Is any of anybody opposed to approval for first, at first reading?
I think that they they might need to do some updating of uh staff or some housekeeping that 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 it's done online.
That's normal.
Minor corrections, and as Mr. Rainey pointed out at the beginning, there is really no substantive change to last year's program study. You're in essence looking at the same document, just updated for.
Line of change.
Finish it.
Alright, I don't see anybody objecting to first time for initial uh first, first reading approval. Um so with that, do I have a motion to approve it? No, do you, do you not approve a first?
Oh, I I have approval of taking a vote, but um I don't plan to vote in favor of it.
Okay, so, alright, does anybody else want to make the motion?
I'll move.
I have a motion by Mayor Joyce, and a second. I have a motion by Mayor Joyce in a second.
If I just maybe heard, right, may I?
Sorry.
I I think I might prefer, uh I just, I I might wanna have a second reading unless it's urgent, just.
Take it to July.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Okay, can I, may I ask, can I ask? Is it why you're opposed to, because there are minor changes, the changes are in here, the we're approving, we're not approving. I know we have a bunch of constraints and I know you you've brought up excellent um points and we don't want kids sitting in in studies and and um. But again, due to budget constraints, it has nothing to do with the program of studies that's before us right now to approve. So you're not gonna approve it because kids sit in too many studies and because of the points that you've raised? Are you, are you gonna approve it in July? I I guess I don't understand what the issue is with what's before us to approve.
Yeah. It it it's a hard decision, you know, like um but I feel like um I. This is one way to make it clear that um we need to continue to find new ways to support the educational, equal educational experiences. For all of our students and I really opposed of study halls for sixth, seventh and eighth graders. Um so that.
But again, that's budget related. It doesn't have anything to do with what's before us, but that's fine. We'll bring it back to ju- in July. We'll bring it up again in July. Since we're not gonna get a motion to approve it um this evening.
Okay, and and just to be clear, because Damon and staff need to prepare for the next school year. We're moving ahead, planning all the classes that you see in program of studies in hopes that you'll approve it.
Okay, so we'll bring it up in the July twenty-first meeting. Uh moving on to the master plan update.
Oh.
Mayor Joyce.
Thank you.
Uh thank you, Mr. Rainey.
Good.
Thank you for being here.
So we had requested um to add this item to the agenda and hoping to keep it on the agenda. The town, um as we have discussed during budget season, um is undergoing a master plan update, which actually. Um if Mr. Cass is still here, touches on a lot of the points that he brought up, um especially with regards to verifying enrollment projections that we were leaning on and what our current enrollment situation is. Looking at um. How to best achieve programming in elementary school, given financial constraints and also the desire of the community um for what. You know, we want to see in our elementary schools, given that we sort of have this neighborhood school system that we wanna weigh out. You know, what are we choosing this potentially over something else and try to frame that better for the community? And uh tonight, uh our finance director, Mike Esmond, is here to give sort of an update of where we are. We did bring a handout. Um and we can get this also maybe as part of the minutes um of sort of where we are in the process. We have taken it in three parts. We're gonna be doing an enrollment study. We're going to be doing a study that looks at, you know, programming efficiencies at the elementary schools and then. So we have those two um consultants, their proposals um for review by the committee tonight and then. Um more of an FYI, um but we're happy to take feedback as it comes and as you guys have the ability to, you know, consume this and weigh in on it. And then we also have currently in flight the responses due back on our third piece, which is a um, I think more of a facility, building planning and education visioning. So sort of a three-piece effort that we're undertaking um right now as we're just coming online with some of the, uh some of these items. We're happy to take feedback from the committee on what you might be expecting to see in either of these three sort of buckets of work. So we can share that with um the consultants as they come online. But we also anticipate that we'll be inviting the consultants to come and present um along the way to the committee to, you know, take in feedback. And there'll be also public meetings that are running um through some of these processes. I'm gonna kick it over to um Director Esmond, um and then we'll, I guess, offer the input from the committee at this time.
Thanks, Mayor Joyce. Um and thank you for that um great summary, cuz I I think that probably touched on probably the main points. I I probably just try to um drill down on just a couple of things in each of the engagements, but um what's in front of you. Um this is the mayor said are essentially two proposals and then um the third um pending um request for proposal. So um we we wanted to tackle this, really can't, um. We didn't wanna tackle this entirely with with um a big master plan, RFP, um. Looking at primarily facility components, but also now incorporating the uh visioning without getting some more critical data pieces. So I I kind of view um and articulate sort of describe the first two engagements, the um that's education resource strategies. And the proper GIS is really kind of critical data inputs into the larger feasibility and visioning components. Um and I think this is, you know, I would probably point to some of the feedback that I I um was able to get and sort of, I think, many members of the committee. And certainly the school district leadership heard during the um engagement um over the last um school year. Um with respect to some data and maybe um some of the things people felt like needed further sort of analysis and inspection. Um ERS, um you probably all recall, they presented to the school committee, I wanna say September, October timeframe, on work they did for us. Um last fall, sorry, last summer into the fall, um there was one key finding that um. They noted in their work on on the K through four schools, um particularly that we have, having six neighborhood schools, they noted that there were. Um and it's sort of a high-level funding, uh finding um that that was an, um while that was a community choice, there were um some challenges for the district. Um not just on financial budgetary issues, but operationally, but um sort of documented those and um. You know, and identified areas where the um, you know, that's the the district would be challenged in that model. Um we've asked them to kind of con- using that one specifically, as you'll see, drill into that. Um and look at ways that um they might be able to further articulate some of those challenges. Um some of the opportunities there. There also was, relatedly, their third finding related to um special education services had some overlap with that. Um I think we all know, um not just, certainly not budget, not just budgetarily, but. The provision of special education is a critical part of the district, makes up a large part of the budget, makes up a large part of the resource allocation. Um and it's instrumental with delivering um, you know, education through um through all of our student population. Um and um they also, you know, noted with respect with the K through four neighborhood schools. That also similarly had some considerations and challenges um when you had those six um different schools where those services are being provided. Um and trying to provide them uniformly um through the, through the entire town and district. Um so those are a couple of opportunities, but we obviously would welcome and and invite feedback. Um Jim and the team have helped us to um to um issue this um pre- uh procurement um that went out. Um ERS, um again, I I think I would, I'd speak very highly of them. What we found with their last work is that they were very data-driven. Um very evidence-based in their work. Um and met the deadlines we asked for them, worked great in the summer, which is sometimes a challenge for a consultant. It um with people being um taking, understandably, taking their vacations then, so they worked around people's schedules very flexibly. Um and I think they were, they're a strong communication team and and bringing good experience in the, in Commonwealth. Um so, you know, we feel very happy about bringing them back, but we would also wanna invite sort of feedback and. Um and but that we can make sure that they're looking at as they endeavor through this um work, which is really just now kicking off. We have a kickoff on Friday um with the town and district together. Um and that's really where we just identify the project team, the data requests going forward. So it's really just starting, just as the work plan that they articulate on um page five would indicate. And the goal will be to wrap that up at the end of August so that we can present to the district. Um, you know, draft and then final findings of that work and ultimately work again into the larger project, um. Larger um facility envisioning work. Uh just really quickly on the, on the proposal demographic and utilization study, so also a very important data piece. Um this proper GIS has been working um. It largely in partnership, but now is actually um sort of on its own, has been working with a number of Massachusetts school districts. They list a a few here, they list a number of clients in the proposal that was shared, but um you, they've, they've had, um been involved in a number of different feasibility projects. A lot of uh MSBA projects, a lot of visioning um engagements in the Commonwealth. Um their work plan is, um I don't wanna call it totally commoditized, but the the work plan is um pretty consistent across districts. They're gonna look at enrollment information, they're, they're going to look at neighborhood level, the um. Um population, um they'll look at census data, Board of Health information, um in order to provide out-year projections. Um that will show, um will show pop, how the, where they see the school enrollment to be over the next, you know, ten years, five, ten years. Uh and then we'll also incorporate major development projects that are on the horizon. To ensure that they're not just accounting for the, all the important census data in sort of how the trends are underlying there, but also. Where we would anticipate based on those projects, um changes in um neighborhood-based population centers. Um and how those would affect enrollment at each, you know, major um school and, you know, that would, that they're looking at. So um they, I would, you know, um I think we used the Newton example, they they've worked for Newton in twenty twenty-four and it's a good example that we could share. Folks are interested in what the output of their work was, they, in in the proposal that they submitted here, you can see um a description of their methodology. Um but they um, you know, sort of have worked in in this um important um lane for a while. To ensure that these types of projects are informed by the best data possible that you can have. Forward-looking, you know, not just where we are. Um um one of the previous speakers was talking about enrollment. This is really about trying to to set as best we can where we're going um and what the, what the enrollment demands of district are gonna be. Um so again, a really important data um input to this, to the third and final piece. Um so the facilities planning and educational visioning um procurement is, remains out on the street, um request review back next week. Um we are, I think we're publishing our final addendum for question, for answers to questions tomorrow. Um giving the the hopeful um such vitters um about a week to digest and then submit proposals. Um hoping that we'll get good interest in this proposal, um during this request. Um I probably won't um read every tasking through and through, but on page five, beginning on page five, you can see sort of the mo- four major tasks that we've articulated here. Um, you know, looking at um. Of all the facilities in the K through four um. Program, um making assessments, but hopefully relying a lot on data and in reporting that has already been captured. So we're not spending lots of hours um retreading a lot of information that is um, has been, you know, already. Produced in various studies and and um besides maybe updating some of the financial figures, probably hasn't had much changes in what would actually been done. Um we really want to have um hopefully hours spent on the educational visioning and and engaging the leadership of the district. Um key folks that have been identified, facility staff as well, to look at um, you know, critical issues and challenges of the buildings. Um and also engaging um, you know, the committee on on these strategic objectives and how those um. May or may not be affected by the the existing conditions of the facilities, um and really assessing how the facilities play a role. Um in meeting the committees, you know, and leadership, um their objectives for across the K through four program as far as delivering educational services. Um and you can see in task three and four, um you know, we we set aside time for the development. Um and then presentation of options for moving forward, um based then after all those visioning sessions. Um and really taking in feedback from various stakeholder groups across the spectrum of this question. Um and um, you know, we've, we've asked for, as you can see, that, you know, we would have um. Sort of a matrix-based finding where where the members of the community could read it in a digestible format, be able to understand. That, you know, the options that are presented and the key considerations, cost information, other critical pieces of that um that need to be part of it. But um hopefully really to engage and inform um decision-makers, stakeholders, community members to understand what's, you know, what is ahead of us. Um and then, you know, we've scheduled no ma- no less than three presentation sessions, um working with the town and the school committee. To make sure that those are provided in a um, in a format and in a way that is as engaging as possible. Um given people have very busy lives, um and it's hard um to necessarily make time to, for some of these important conversations um with everything else going. Um so I'll stop there. Um I hope Mayor touched on major, the major points we wanted to have presented, but just to recap um. What the mayor had stressed and I think we would be happy to ensure that we get feedback um from the committee going forward and and answer any questions. And um, you know, we look forward to these three important engagements, sort of um helping us move forward with the master planning and visioning components. And um hopefully folks see the the interest in in the need to get the data on the front end of this as a critical piece. Um and hopefully the summer is a very productive timeframe for us to to move that forward. So the master planning work is really in September, is really working with some of the best information we can have.
Questions from the committee?
I need time to read.
I was gonna say, you may need time to read through, but did you have a question, Mr. Fogarty?
Yeah, I had a question, thanks. So I guess like the, the final product of this process is, since the master plan is like a. Do, it kind of like a written report that would ultimately be produced? Is that kind of the, the, the goal, to come to some kind of document that uh that's worth like a vision?
I think, I think so. The best way I'd say it is that options would be presented and reported out and and I think the, the output of it. Um report would probably be the best way to say it, but I think we, I think I keep, continue on to stress, we wanna make sure that it's presented in a way that's digestible for the public. It's not just some document that sort of goes on shelves, it's something that people can read and 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 um and the vendor would be someone who. Uh would be a firm that demonstrates an, an ability to really speak to folks and and engage them across different levels, not just in written reporting. But yes, uh ultimately, the goal would be that option would, options would be presented and sort of the, the considerations around those, not just financial, but all types of considerations around those options. Um would be um sort of included in that report. So um it, it, it would probably be manifest in that form, like, you know, recommendations and or here's the options we identify. Um and, you know, here's um, you know, here's sort of the, the, let's say, the financial considerations, the long-term. Um, you know, capital need of this pursuing this, the, the impact on the, on the, the district operational budget, the, the impact on the town's facilities budget. Um other educational outcome impacts associated with those um opt, you know, that each, each option. Um, you know, looking at things around the, the ability and timeframes, milestones for, for whatever those options are to be accomplished, you know. So that we're looking at them in realistic timeframes. Um, you know, I think those are sort of. Some of the basic but key elements of those recommendations.
I see, so, so the um, basically, these three, there's gonna be three different vendors who are all gonna sort of contribute. The first two vendors are gonna contribute like information that will then be used by the vendor uh that um. Is the consultant for the school facilities planning and educational vi- visioning, and then that vendor will create like a final product that's in place.
Yes.
And is that, is that uh master plan, is it looking at? Uh all of the school, the different levels of the schools, for example, like elementary school, middle school and high school?
So the primary focus will be K through four. Um we would, we would want them, or we would want the discussion to probably have the backdrop of the other. You know, not just to have K through four, but that for this purpose is really kind of what we've been focused, you know, sort of targeting on. Um but, you know, I think it would be, it, it has the ability to be more expansive uh um in the discussion and and sort of engagements um portions of this.
And and is it, is the plan uh intended to look at um sort of needed capital improvements? That different schools need or like sort of long-term use of the buildings?
Yeah, so there's, there's actually a pretty good um documented um. Body of findings related to the capital needs of our, particularly our K through four programs, uh K through four facilities. I want to say there's probably at least three, at least certainly two comprehensive studies that were done over the last twenty years that really list critical building system needs. And a lot of that work still needs to be done. So what so there is an absolutely an element of that contemplated in this work. What we're trying not to do is essentially replicate those previous studies. Wherever it is not, it is the case that it's not needed, for lack of a better way to say. So if I could just drill on one example, if one if if in the early twenty two thousands, we said that the plumbing system of a school district or the HVAC system was original to the school's construction. And was likely to, you know, require, you know, critical upgrades and replacement at certain point, and that replacement hasn't been done yet. I don't know that we need to have them walking every foot of square foot of duck work through and, you know, kind of reestablishing that. I think helping us update some of the cost components where that is appropriate would be helpful. But a lot of that work won't hopefully require intensive hours of looking at every critical building system afresh.
That makes sense. I mean, so it's not really, it's not like a facilities assessment where you're going in and looking at them. Right. First, we're we're getting studying it in order to determine what's wrong, but 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 you're looking at, I would assume like this is going to look at like long-term vision of what how to address some of those capital needs.
Yeah, so that's the idea. It's called like a plan or options. Moving forward, like for
I know I've been asking a lot of questions. I don't I don't want to, I kind of like wrap it up so other people can ask questions. But I guess my other question is like, in terms of this process, like what 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 is the ultimate? Is like who's overseeing this process? Like who is like what what in within our town government, like what department or what body is sort of accountable or has a final say about how this is like managed, I guess?
So the 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 procurement itself has been issued through the mayor's office, right? But we are absolutely intending to work collaboratively and jointly with the school district on this. We so the actual project organizational plan and structure, I think is somewhat understanding or just saying first what I just said, I mean, that we intend every, we're planning to work very closely together. I think there are still some pieces that will probably the day-to-day project management side, because that's going to require someone sort of within the town and district side to work through this. We're still probably going to figure need to figure some of that out. But I would say that, you know, I I I would answer that saying, I think we intend to sort of engage this vendor like we did with the ERS last year, where we worked closely with the school district to sort of provide feedback and and data from whichever side was appropriate and, you know, probably provide shared and joint sort of, you know, collaborative responses, et cetera, to them, to the to them as we need it. I think the other piece of this is we will have facilities. Public works and facilities will be a critical piece of this and with the with the facility, you know, assessment and envisioning piece as well. So their, you know, their feedback and participation is critical as well.
And and then my my final question or point is just, is there any kind of committee that is established that would I guess be composed of different stakeholders, like for example, the parents, the the community members that would be regularly meeting with or or the consultant in the process. And then they would that if there is such a committee, I know that would there be public meetings of some sort?
Well, to be to to be candid, Mr. Fogarty, I'm not sure yet of what that structure will be. I mean, I think one of the things you know, presented today and asking for feedback is is to hear sort of.
Sorry, I didn't mean to, you know, just my final point, I I I it's just that I several people in the community have said they're they're interested in having like parental input in different, you know, from the different schools, like maybe even representatives from each elementary school. I think that's a good idea. I think that having a committee with some kind of oversight or regular meetings with the consultant is a good idea. And I I think having public meetings so the public can kind of watch the discussions to some extent, it would that would be in favor of that. So that's kind of my idea.
Anything else, Mr. Fogarty?
It it's great, Mr. Fogarty, that you brought that up because that was one of the questions that I was going to ask is who's going to do the the work? Who who in Braintree is going to do the work with the vendor, right? So we had the model with the Samborn project where we had an administrative team doing some work with a vendor. And we also had, I don't remember the proper names. Was it an advisory board, an administrative team? Then we had, was it the advisory board with school committee members and members of the public? Okay, I I prefer that. I think it's a great idea to have lots and lots of input to help this project move forward. And we do have to think very hard about the makeup of this oversight because of the timelines that have been put forth, right? I know that we want to have a result before we talk about the FY twenty seven budget. And it does seem like that it's very well laid out. But to get that done, we're going to have to do a lot of work.
It's an aggressive time.
It's that's the word I was looking for, aggressive timeline. Okay, so a couple of different questions. I really like in this RFP that there's going to be multiple formats to engage the community. The RFP specifically states several times polling, surveys, open feedback, questionnaires, lots of different touchpoints with the community for them to give their feedback and for us to think about it as a school committee at many different points in the project. I really like the structure of that. I did have a a question, and I don't know who this question is for, maybe it's for Mr. Lee, because you've been here longer. Does this kind of project supersede the Habib, am I remembering right, Habib report? That we've talked about that was then, yeah, the two thousand six that was in our MSBA?
It has overtures of being like that report, but to Mr. Esman explained, the first piece is the data that is necessary to really take a holistic look at what the needs of the district district are not only now, but in the future. So the enrollment data that Mr. Esman was speaking to, I think is a critical piece that I did not think was really present in the Habib report way back when. Also to Mr. Esman's point, if you pull out that report and went through a lot of the recommendations or observations that were made, nothing was done with them. You know, so a lot of the work that was identified back then was never done. So to the point, to go back and reevaluate that and reassess it when you already know it's a problem. I think this this particular project might be able to be more efficient than that in the way that they approach the work. So I think the data element that Mr. Esman explained is critical because you really want to know what are you going to be dealing with five, ten years down the road. But you also need some solutions for the immediacy, right? So the Habib report can help inform this next step of evaluation. But this will be completely unique and different from the Habib report in a lot of ways as well.
Now, you I know that the this RFP says try not to duplicate efforts because of the aggressive timeline. And I know we've seen enrollment data from administration. Do you feel that that we're going to get enough new things out of the enrollment data that would be a little bit more accurate? I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, what's going to be new from what we've seen from administration?
Well, it's people who do this for a living, who can make better projections of what ten years from now looks like as far as enrollment and and demographics in the community are concerned. You know, we we can talk very pragmatically about a stabilization of of enrollment over the last couple of years compared to pre-pandemic. What we are not experts in is what will any new development in the town do to enrollment? What neighborhoods could get hot? What neighborhoods could get cold? And the impact they would have on different elementary schools? So looking at some of the other reports that Mr. Esman shared from some other communities that had done some work like this. There's some really interesting ways of looking at where might you be able to predict an influx of kids coming into a given neighborhood. And it talked about things like the ages of the the families that are there, you know, typical childbearing ages or not, and you know, if they're older, you know, the idea that less kids would be in those neighborhoods. So, you know, experts are experts in a particular field. And in terms of enrollment, if they can do a better job projecting what it's going to look like ten years from now, that's really useful data to have as you begin to make some significant financial decisions about where do you want to put your resources over that time span and beyond? And maybe that helps inform the community in terms of what they want to do over the next ten to fifteen to twenty-five years. But it is a critical piece of what you want to take a look at.
That helps. I see it. Their their expertise would be helpful in trying to make more informed decisions about unknowns. Do you all feel that this is essential to prepare a future MSBA application? Whatever building that might be?
I I'll I can speak a little bit to that in that the most recent conversation we had with the MSBA MSBA did allude to the fact that we should be doing this sort of master planning work to inform sort of future projections and future any future building projects, you know, acknowledging that communities do have to sort of put in this effort and investment in planning efforts and communities that do that are ultimately more successful in, you know, getting projects through with the MSBA. So I think it's I sort of reading between the lines felt like this was an sort of an expectation that they had to be sort of doing some of this work. So I think it's it's time we've updated, you know, the Habib stuff. And have, I think, too, for the community's perspective, like, obviously, no one can predict the future. I think the district does a good job with, you know, watching trends and making anticipations in enrollment. But if you really want a robust analysis of that, given, you know, real estate conditions, the economics of our region. I think a study like this will be very informative. And then also, I think, you know, to the public, that's what I would expect the district to be doing too. So I think it's just another layer of adding to, you know, where are we going? What is what is next? Like if we if we had consolidated schools this in this last effort, like where are we going with that? And I think this is trying to expand upon that. And I just touching on some of the other comments made, you know, our decision is so much more complex than do we want neighborhood schools or do we want consolidated schools? It's do we want neighborhood schools at the cost of this? Do we want to consolidate schools in the effort to add these things or, you know? So I we need to expand the the conversation, and this is what this effort is doing. And I really do appreciate the feedback on what the committee would like to see as part of public engagement. We don't, we have a relatively short time period to do this. I don't think we'll be finished by next budget season. But hopefully there'll be some vision there to guide us. And, you know, we want to build as much public awareness, you know. Mr. McDonald and I had, you know, tried to get around to the PTOs before summer break, just to talk about this effort undergoing. We realized with summer break, you know, the some of this timing of this seems, you know, there's always the criticism that you're doing it when everyone's on vacation, but we're really trying to just get this done and get this information informing our decisions into future conversations.
So when, so it looks like the RFP as a closing date due June sixteenth at noon. And and will we hear an update on project commencement?
Um, we'll definitely provide that at the next committee meeting. We don't know if we got any responses, to be honest. So hopefully we will have a couple to select from, but there is a potential that no one will respond and we'll have to sort of readvertise, but we will see.
Thank you for the update. Mr. Esman.
Mr. Fogarty, did you have something else?
Yeah, I just wanted to add just about the timeline. But one thing I would say that maybe a good in terms of the timeline as to whether I I understand that we want to get to a end product and kind of move forward. But at the same time, we want to make sure that it's thorough enough that it is, I mean, the town wants, I think, make sure that it's thorough enough that you get a good well-thought-out recommendation in that that it's something that I guess the the town finds acceptable. So one thing that I think the town government can look at is like what what in in similar projects in other communities, did they adopt a similar timeframe or was it much longer? If it was much longer, if if this, and sort of see what the standard practice is. I'm sure that you've looked at that. That that would be like, if if this is a lot shorter than other communities, I would maybe be a little concerned that the consultant might not be able to get the job done in time. But if if that's sort of the standard, like this kind of turnaround time. Because I'm sure other towns in Massachusetts undertaken similar efforts. So that could be like an indicator of like what, you know, the 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 schedule is realistic or not. I think is what I'm getting at.
Yeah, I I would say I think one of the best groups to tell us that is going to be the submitting of the offer. You know, I know when I was a consultant, you know, we weren't shy when we would have to provide that feedback. I mean, usually that it wouldn't be the first time that they tried to be aggressive to meet your sort of timeframes, but we'll be looking for that. And I mean, that I think that's one of the critical pieces of this. There's you know, there's always a potential that that takes twists and turns. So we have to really try to keep us on track for that. We we also try to put, you know, very clear deadline, you know, timeframes for which the work will be, you know, completed by. We'll look for the feedback on that. I I think I think there are, what I how I'd answer about the other communities, there are a lot of other communities have done this. Probably one piece that makes us unique is that we are trying to not reverse the the discovery or go back in time and repeat the same discovery. And that's sort of one of the things we hope will be allow us to sort of after selecting the vendor, with that first forty-five to sixty-day tasking is really for them to be able to do a lot of that work based on, you know, what's been already out there and with the impact and interviews from in the interviews from our facilities team and engagement. But we'll have to see. I mean, we if I'm frank, I feel like even if you give yourself two years, you'll feel like two years isn't enough time. I I think we just have to try our best and hold the vendor to it, but we'll see what their feedback is. And and I think we need to be out there and try to be aggressive.
Yeah, that makes that makes sense. And I I think I would just and that if it's possible, if the vendor comes back and says, we you think we need more time, I would think to me, it makes sense to be kind of work with the vendor. If you get, I don't know if it's can be done once you've done an RFP, but if like the vendor recommends changing the schedule or expanding it or shortening it, like, it would it used to be like if it's possible to do so, like working with the vendor in terms of what they recommend. What they they feel is realistic.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think in any major engagement I've ever been part of in the in the kickoff. Or even in the submitting documents, they they begin, you know, they address some of those things. And, you know, you really sort of set the you know, the, you know, here's what the sort of day-to-day work plan is. And usually you get an updated one once sort of you've had all the you meet folks and kind of reassessed, reassert the timeframe. So, yeah, absolutely. I think we would be looking to get that input and, you know, things, once you have an engagement, it sort of evolves.
Anything else from anybody else? And this will be on our agenda, obviously, going forward, and it'll be something that we'll be engaged in. You know, on a monthly on a monthly basis. Thank you, Mr. Esman, for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, moving on, administrator updates, the presentation of the twenty twenty-five yearbook.
I have here the two thousand twenty-five yearbook. From which I plagiarized most of my speech on Saturday. Wonderful job with it, all those involved in it. I'll I'll pass it along so you can all see it, but it is my job tonight just to present it to the school committee and and Lisa just key.
What page is the school committee on?
I did not look that up.
Did not put it. I don't even know if I took a picture of us this year to tell the truth. Did they come and take a picture of us? Yeah, I don't even remember that. I I ask this every year. I'm just being facetious. What page are we on? No, that's great. Yeah, it is. It's a it's a great document. Good. Thanks for all the hard work on that project. Moving on. So from the school committee, so consideration of of proposed twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school committee dates. I've already received some feedback that some of these dates are not working for everybody. So I'll ask everybody to take the dates, go back, look at your lives coming up in the next year. The dates are basically based on this year's dates. But please send me any feedback or any dates that don't work, and we'll try to make sure we can accommodate as many people on any date. So we'll bring that back next meeting. At this time, I just want to remind everyone that there is a local election coming up in November. Every two years, three school committee seats are up around the ballot. And this year, one of those seats is mine. I've decided I will not be running reelection. I'd like to spend more time with my father and my kids and grandkids who live in central Mass and Florida. So if you would like more information about the local election schedule and the nomination process, please, uh, contact the town clerk's office. And meanwhile, I will continue to focus on the work at hand. My current term, uh, does not expire until the beginning of January. So I just want to make that announcement tonight. Uh, moving on to student representative reports.
Good evening. Um, the halls as well as this meeting feel a lot of dear without our seniors as our school came and went. And we celebrated their milestone of graduation on recent days past Saturday. I think I can speak for the entire student body when I say we wish the graduating class of 2025 the best. Not wait to receive the class of 2029 into our student body in the next academic year. Transitioning into recent events at BHS. Earlier this afternoon, our track team hosted their second annual event, they are dealing the race, where the top track athletes at BHS compete against staff members to raise money for the organization Good Sports, which is, um, an initiative seeking to drive equitable access and, excuse me, sorry, um, in youth sports and physical activity by supporting children in high need communities. The teachers face a tough loss with the students winning two out of three relays. But the engaging event was truly a representation of the compassionate dedication of our students for orchestrating this for a second year. Honoring for an incredible cause. Additionally, as meetings are taking place after school for AP classes beginning in the fall, I would like to take this opportunity to speak again, the toll that extreme class sizes have taken on our students and staff. With teachers and resources stretched thin among a mass of students too great for them to reasonably deliver a fully rounded education to. Make no mistake, our teachers have taken on these circumstances forced upon them this year with resilience and dedication to quality education. Yet these conditions are inherently a detriment to all involved in the academic process. The realities of unmanageable class sizes are being failed by averages that do not represent the whole story of classrooms bursting at the seams. And I hope that the school committee will act upon the significant strain that is currently being placed on our students and staff.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. It's incredibly lovely to be back with you guys again for the last time this year. What has been happening in the school is after AP exams, I had, I had my Model UN conference at Weymouth High School. I debated with other conference members about the Cuban Missile Crisis and came up with effective ways to stop bombing and war from happening into reaching a point of negotiation. I've also been volunteering at the prison book program in Quincy, a nonprofit organization that helps those in prison. Once or twice a year, prisoners all over the U.S. send a letter to us requesting for books. We're responsible for select, for selecting the books to the best of our ability and sending them, and sending it to them. I'm unpacking duty, which means I ensure all the books are best, best fit, help package them and add a stamp so that they can be sent to the facility. Additionally, as Ruby said, we had the teacher versus student race today. And I was unfortunately not to be there for the whole entire time, but it was entertaining to see, to see how everyone united to form a really good BHS community. Lastly, I wanted to say how much I enjoy my time as a student representative on the school committee this year. I want to thank all of you for giving me this wonderful, wonderful opportunity as I've learned so much about what it takes to run for, to run the B, the BPS district. And I hope to continue my time here next year. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you both. Any questions from the student committee, uh, the reports?
Oh, um, so they, I'm so glad that you're interested in coming next year. How about you?
I would love to return to this position.
We really appreciate your service.
Absolutely. When did they decide?
Uh, we just started our application today. And we should find out soon.
We put in a good word or, do we have any influence now?
I've learned so much. Thank you.
Excellent. Yes. No, your contribution has been, um, very impactful. So thank you both.
Of course.
All right, moving on, uh, policy and education subcommittee update.
Thank you. Uh, today we are, uh, doing a second reading of, um, the Title IX policies. So we are, uh, updating and adding, uh, the policies. This will revert our policies to what they were in January of 2021. State law will remain the same and, uh, provide, um, all protections that the students and staff currently have. So, um, we, um, need to approve, we, hopefully we are going to approve policy AC, the non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation. Policy ACR, civil rights grievance procedure. And then policy ACAB, sexual harassment Title IX policy. And policy ACABR, which is a grievance procedure for complaints of sexual harassment under Title IX, under the education amendments of 1972. And then we are going to eliminate, um, four policies that we added, um, last fall. Policy ACA, non-discrimination on the basis of sex. Policy ACA dash R, non-discrimination on the basis of sex under the title, under Title IX, including sex-based harassment. Policy ACGA. Civil rights, um, grievance procedure that was adopted in 2024. Uh, policy ACDB, Title IX, sexual discrimination grievance procedure. Any questions about, about these?
Questions from committee? I don't see any.
Okay, so I, I, just for the sake of time, I will make the motion to approve policy AC, policy ACR, policy ACAB, policy ACAB dash R, and eliminate policy ACA, policy ACA dash R, policy ACGA, and policy ACGB.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Tuffy and a second by Dr. Horak. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. So, uh, secondly, we, um, we, at the subcommittee, uh, talked about the warrant procedure and people commented favorably about the new method of sharing warrants electronically. And, uh, we voted to pilot using, uh, electronic signature, electronic signatures on all warrants, but beginning July 1st. So four war, four signatures would still be required. The warrants would be shared electronically to the whole committee. And, um, that certainly would be a, a safe time saver for, um, in the summer months when the case doesn't go as often. So. Questions about that?
Any questions about that?
Yeah, my only question, did you say, so with, with the warrants, so the only four school committee members have to sign a warrant. But would the warrant be sent to the, every member of the school committee, even those who are not signing it?
So the warrant would be sent out to everybody, uh, and even if the, if you're signing it, you still can read, you can still read, uh, the warrant, um, it'll still be up for you.
Okay.
It'll be available, I mean, to, uh, review.
All right, thanks. This is sort of a fun read.
Okay, any other questions or?
Yeah, I really like this.
Yes.
Um, I think that it's a good way to ensure that they get signed in a timely manner without us having to sign them in our more infrequent meetings and we check our email daily and we're able to sign off and keep the paperwork going. So I, I am in favor of this.
Absolutely.
But we like to do a same night action on this.
Yeah, is anybody opposed for same night action? We're piling this as a July 1st. We'll see how it, we'll see how it bears. Okay, I have a motion to.
So moved.
I have a motion by Dr. Horak.
Second.
A second by Ms. Tuffy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aginamous. Okay, so before we adjourn, we have one more piece. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I have two more.
Oh, you do. Apologize.
Uh, so, uh, Mr. Lee shared a proposal to implement a delayed opening for grades 10 to 12 on the first day of school in the fall. Having ninth graders to have a two-hour orientation. So the, uh, 10th to 12th grades would come to school two hours later. That would give the ninth graders, um, identify, you know, pool on the fourth floor. And, um, so the committee moved to, uh, the subcommittee moved this to the full committee for a vote.
So in years passed, the ninth graders have gone to school a day before, so they'd have the school to themselves. But this way, we're just going to give the ninth graders a couple of hours on the first day of school to, to tour the schools and all that for two hours. And then have a delayed opening for the upperclassmen. Any questions on that? Anything?
Do you have any comments on that? Whether, do you think it would work for the, um, ninth graders?
Um, I think it would. I think some upperclassmen might need to come in early because, um, some, like student council members or peers that have been selected, um, as leaders in their respective fields would, um, typically last year I did it for the past two years, we'd just come in the day before and help with orientation. Yeah, so I think that would just extend to the morning as well. Yeah.
So would buses be running regularly in the morning and then?
Work is in the morning, the normal high school run would go, pick up all the freshmen, take, and anybody who wanted to come early, take them to the high school, drop them off. Then they go and they do the middle school route, then they go and do the elementary route, and then they go back and get the 10th and 12th graders and make the final run to high school.
It'd be an extra bus run.
But all teachers are on staff at that point in time, the orientation can be more robust than it currently is because for the most part it is student, uh, helpers and administration that are running the orientation. This would allow the, the full complement of staff to be there to do the orientation with the freshman.
And I don't think that upperclassmen, if they didn't have to come to school, will mind a couple of hours extra to sleep in on the first day of school. So.
Thanks. Mr. Lee wanted to do the same day, uh?
Yeah, any opposed to same day action for that as well? So they can plan for accordingly for the first day. Okay, so moved. I have a motion by Dr. Horak.
Second.
Second by Ms. Tuffy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aginamous.
Finally, um, I presented a proposal for our school committee representation and branding policy, which would provide consistent guidelines, establish an accessible library of graphics and ensure that all brands comply with Braintree's Public Schools' mission of being achieving, creative, and inclusive. Examples of branding kits can be found in, uh, Ashland Public Schools, Rockton in Boston, as well as many universities. Uh, principals and the art department will verify that all logos, imagery, and names used by BPS do not violate copyright or trademark laws. And the subcommittee will continue the discussion at their next meeting on August 26th at 6:30 at Colbrun.
Any questions about that? I'm seeing.
That's it for us.
That's it. Thank you. Sorry to have interrupted you. Um, now, before we adjourn, we have one more piece of business. Um, as you're all aware, Mr. Lee is retiring at the end of his contract in mid-September. Tonight is his last school committee meeting as our superintendent, as Mr. McDonald officially takes the helm on July 1st. In 2012, I was a member of the Braintree High School Principal Search Committee as a school committee representative and a high school parent volunteer. The search committee enthusiastically and unanimously moved Mr. Lee forward to then superintendent Dr. Peter Gersberg as he was hired in July of 2012. Excuse me. Excuse me. Mr. Lee served as principal for five years under three different superintendents, Dr. Kay, Dr. Maureen Murray, and Dr. Frank Hackett. In his role as principal, he came before the school committee as a member of the leadership team numerous times. In July 2017, Dr. Hackett chose to promote from within and appointed Mr. Lee as interim assistant superintendent. And a year later, in July 2018, as assistant superintendent, he served in this role for three more years. In July 2021, Dr. Hackett took a position in another district and the school committee unanimously voted to appoint Mr. Lee as the interim superintendent. Six months later, in December, he was appointed superintendent. Mr. Lee has worked with three superintendents, colonists administrators, three mares, and a dozen different school committee members. As superintendent, you have led the district with strength and dignity through some very difficult challenges, including COVID restrictions and the deepest budget cuts we've seen in more than 20 years. I personally appreciate your expertise, your professionalism, your straightforwardness, and your quick wit. Um, students are always your highest priority. Mr. Lee, you have left us in good hands with assistant superintendent Nora Vanaza and director of finance and operations, Sarah Kaufman, along with incoming superintendent Tim McDonald. It has been my pleasure to work with you in all your roles in the Braintree Public Schools, but especially in the last three and a half years. Thank you for your service and the many contributions to the students in Braintree and to the entire Braintree Public School community. I wish you every success in your future endeavors. Of course, we have a gift, the traditional gift for you, and also a commendation for you. And I will open it up now to the mayor and to members of the school committee for their comments.
I'll kick it off. Um, three mayors, man, that's, that's, that's a lot of personality there, I think. But, um, in all seriousness, um, I think your professionalism, your, I think very straightforward in sharing where you think we need to go, but being respectful of maybe the community's hesitation. And, um, you've always said, like, we will take care of the schools, whatever, whatever, whatever we need to do, we'll do on behalf of our students. And I, I believe that. I'm glad we didn't have to do Plan B this year. But, um, I knew we were going to still be in good hands with your leadership. So thank you for all the years you've dedicated to our district, to our families, our students, our educators. Um, we'll certainly miss you. Um, I hope you enjoy your retirement.
Any other comments from the committee members?
I'd say, yeah, just really, Mr. Lee, I just want to thank you for your service to the town of Braintree, in all the different positions you've had. And just say I really enjoyed working with you, uh, as a school committee member. And best of luck with your retirement.
Thank you. You stick it around for a few more weeks.
I can go. Um, I really appreciated your calm disposition and professionalism. And I'm truly thankful for your service to the students of Braintree. And, uh, one thing that I've learned from you is learning how to work with people who disagree with those around us because it is a fact of life of being in leadership, and not even busy going to agree with you. And I've really appreciated and learned from you of how to work with that and come to consensus and how to build consensus in a community. So for that, I'm thankful. Good luck.
And best of luck to you. Uh, hopefully, uh, you will not have such a long ride every morning. And you put in a lot of hours and, uh, and I wish you best of luck in the future.
I will not have a long ride. But as I mentioned in my letter a long time ago, it's been an absolute honor working for Braintree for the last 13 years. Thank you.
And then the commendation is Braintree Public Schools' certificate of commendation proudly awarded to Jim Lee. Congratulations. The Braintree School Committee is pleased to award you this certificate of commendation for your many contributions and years of dedication to the children and staff of the Braintree Public Schools. Please accept our sincere appreciation and it's signed by myself, chairperson, and by Nora Vanaza, Assistant Superintendent. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Dr. Horak and a second by Ms. Tuffy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.